Tuesday, February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Code enforcement officer Luke is a little under the weather, so he won't be here tonight. So you people that are presenting, you may end up getting dumb questions from us, but it's only because Luke isn't here, okay? So just if you'll please bear with us. That's fine. Okay, roll call. George Hansen. Trisha Carroll. Michael Haydeck is not here. Terry Doty. Crystal Harland. Jay Durost is here. Mark Nesselus. Item two, review and acceptance of minutes of the October first, twenty twenty-four meeting. I was not at that meeting, so I'm gonna stay. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes? See what?
It seemed pre-occupied in my recollection, so I would move that we approve of this.
Okay, anybody wish to second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October first meeting. All those in favor? Those opposed? Item three, chairs report, there is none. Item four, code enforcement officers report, there is none. Item five, unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have three things listed here, and one of them may take a little while to get through. So we're gonna take these just a little bit out of order, folks, so that if you've got something here that's only gonna take five minutes, you won't have to sit here for another hour and a half, okay? So A, subdivision preliminary review, Russell Hill Acres, applicant Bruce Clement. Hi, Bruce, if you would come up to the podium and introduce yourself, then just give us an overview of your, of your project.
I'm Bruce Clement, some of you know me anyway. And we have decided to break up the family property. We have to go through the subdivision more than anything, that's basically it.
What is your plans on, how much subdividing do you plan to do?
It's about twelve acres out of what I own, and it'll be all right along the road, frontage.
Will each of those on subdivision have their own driveway access?
We had planned it both ways, but Luke told us that probably individual driveways would be the better way.
Those lots are approximately a hundred feet wide?
Yep.
How many acres each lot?
One. One acre lots are pretty close. I guess it's a little bit more, there's wetlands involved, and I guess you had to go more.
You have a survey.
One acre plus wetlands.
Some of them look like they're kind of, you know, on the side of the hill. I mean, it's not super steep, I guess. Like Lot five seven seems to have some underlying to it. Are you looking like trailers or homes or what do you?
Well, homes and more homes, but that's.
Whatever, if somebody wants to do stick build, you're gonna, that's fine, if somebody wants to do.
That's what I'm hoping for more than the trailers, because we got a trailer park across the street, but.
Yes, I see that.
When do you hope to get this project off the ground, Bruce?
I can just assume they can.
Is it all pending our approval, or is it gonna be a few months down the road or summer?
It may be a few months down the road, until I get, find out exactly where everything's gotta be.
I'm assuming you've been with, with Luke on this from the beginning, have you and Luke?
Yep, we've talked. And he's also talked to the surveyor doing the land back. And soil test and all that have been done. I don't know if you got the original plans or not.
I'm sure Luke, Luke has got the.
Luke has got it.
Yeah, I see like every site has it, they have a test been on it.
Has to be too, so that it can be.
And I see that there's.
Basically, they're all one acre lots.
Yeah, right.
Hundred feet of frontage? That's what I saw on my computer.
Yep, basically, yeah.
One of the questions I was gonna ask Luke, I couldn't find the information in my computer, but certain districts have different requirements for frontage and lot size. And I've got to assume that that was already discussed with you, and this meets the lot size.
I believe so. There were some questions back and forth in the survey. The survey has been doing it more than I have, because when you start talking acreage, I don't know.
Yeah, I, off the top of my head, I don't recall like the, you know, frontage on rural, on a rural lot.
Cotton and Luke, if I remember it, it's a hundred feet.
Because I certainly know that in town, there's a lot less than a hundred feet. That's different, that's.
I think if I remember right, that's what he told me, well, it had to be a hundred feet or more.
So the people will buy the lot, and it'll be already water and a place for septic, or I mean, where's it?
We have already placed the septic, the water in the septic. Where this scenario has had, had to let them put it wherever they want, because then you end up with a septic system too close to the neighbors water well.
He's saying that they've already put the spots into the test pits, they have not installed them. Whoever buys a lot is gonna have to put it where they want.
Whoever, whatever builder they use.
That's only gonna be a condition that the sewers are going in the back and the water's going on the front, I believe, is what he drew up.
One of them's right by the road, the test pit, Lot eleven. You can see most of them are.
Oh, that's the way he was talking anyway, drawing it, if I remember right on the map, that's the way it was.
What's the, what's that stream behind it? It's not on your property, but it's behind. You know, some of it's on your property, but.
Yeah, it's just a seasonal brook. It's not a, but that's probably two hundred to three hundred feet away from where the back lines are. Just runs down through everything there.
And these are like what, four hundred and fifty feet long or something, so they go pretty deep, four hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah, to get the acre plus. I'm gonna say, well, I left Luke with the bigger map, but you could actually see something on.
Usually he's here, he can peek. He'll show things and zoom in, but. So I can sort of see what.
You have, you have restrictive deed? On your deed, well, you have restrictive guidelines.
Yeah, that's what I plan is, yeah.
Like a certain like, you know, like he was just saying, like stick build modular, you're not doing many mobile homes.
It depends on what the market is, I guess, but I don't, I'd like to stay away from that if I can. Because then you start getting into older mobile homes, whether you want them in there or not.
Right, right.
We're stick building or a modular home, that's more of a substantial.
Maybe some, maybe some covenants on age requirement.
Age requirements, because sometimes you can't, if someone were to buy a used mobile home, if like a buyer or someone were to buy, they can't just.
Put in an older home.
It's more my favorite, I can keep away from the old ones because.
Yeah, then you would just put that in your restricted covenants then. It could also be, I mean, like in rural stuff too, you could, they can have, well, it depends, because your subdivision can be designed where you don't have farm animals sometimes, some, even though it's rural, some people won't, some subdivisions won't allow chickens or anything like that. It really depends on what you wanted, how you wanna design it.
Really hadn't thought much about that.
Yeah, it's, they're just so.
Not many people raise chickens anymore.
Right, right, right.
Price of eggs, maybe they will.
I was gonna say, I think there might be a thing now.
And there's people in the neighborhood that have got them anyway, so.
Right, right.
Right now, is this mostly wooded?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a field.
It's all before the, that part over here is where it clears off.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit drawn into that field, but. But it's mainly between the field and where I live.
Yeah, the white one, yeah.
Well, I think we face one here, which seems reasonable.
Anybody on the board have any more questions for Bruce on this project? Yeah, this is just a preliminary, so we won't be getting into too much of this, but I am sure you'll be in touch with Luke or sitting down with him at some point. Fairly soon, probably you will be on the agenda to go through a full review like we're gonna do tonight with another. So anyway, thank you for your information.
All right. Any more questions, um?
I have to step out from this one, because I may be involved in that, so I can't vote.
We can't really take a vote on it yet, because we haven't had our level two, which we need to answer. All we do now, this was just information.
We don't take any action.
That's correct. Okay, again, we're gonna step out of line here a little bit and go to one that won't take all that long, and that would be C, site plan review for Broadway Childcare. I'm assuming you are Natasha?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. Luke has already done a site visit.
Yes.
I'm assuming. Yes, well, I know he has, because he told me that he did. Am I correct in that, that he said that you need permits from the town before you can move on to the next process of getting it from the state?
I guess zoning approval from the town before I can send in an application. To get things started. This is kinda like step one.
Yeah, it's like, Mark was bringing up, a lot of things, it's stuff that we don't go into what the state does, like paint and light paint and all that sort of thing. But there are certain things that Luke has to go through here, and he, he advised me of a couple things that he had a, I don't say a concern, but he was, I'm assuming he's spoken to you about them, and one was the retaining fence?
Yes.
Did he tell you that he would be okay for the time being if you put a retaining fence within the current retaining fence?
Yes, that was kind of my plan, was to block off like a, get a sturdier fence just to block off the air, the play area, and then just keep my perimeter fence for my own.
Whatever that fence is, and I don't know, it, it really didn't meet.
No, it's just, it's just rollout, it's just rollout fence.
If we approve you tonight, we will have to put some conditions on it. And one would be like this, this fence thing.
Yes.
And this is also just preliminary here, so. There, I know, I don't know all of regulations for childcare here, I mean, there's, you know, number of.
Ratios, ratios per percent. How many is it?
I think if all the kids were above five, it would be one to twelve, which seems a little extreme, so that's not like, that's not really my plan, but I think that's the like upper level.
So being that it's on Broadway, it's kind of a school zone, you're gonna, like, you're kind of set back, right? If I'm, I don't try and remember the house, so.
Yes, up a hill, back.
Yes, on, on the street where I live, there's a daycare, there wasn't a daycare, and like, if you were there at like drop off or pickup time, there was no like off-street, I mean, it's just was.
Oh, right, right, no, that's not the case. You pull up in. You pull up into my driveway, there's plenty of space.
It's a little bit different than the one on Elm Street, the one you're talking about.
Yes, yeah. So that was, I just wasn't quite sure which house it was, I knew it was one of the ones on the left.
You know the one that got tore down? It's the one right after that, going towards the school on the left.
I don't, I kind of know it.
So we just need to do something with the zone, are we rezoned?
Oh, we can vote on it, we can vote on the town approval partly now. Again, there's gonna have to be some, if we do approve it, there's gonna have to be some conditions, but Luke has got something he needs put on it that need to be addressed. So, yeah, at, at some point during this, we will vote on this tonight as to whether it's passed muster for the town, and then pass you off to the state, which, which is your, your real issue, where you.
We just need to allow it in that zoning because of the school. Where it's a business and the.
Luke has reviewed it, and everything's, everything's good with him, except for the few things that I've, I've noted. I've got one more thing I need to note on it, but Luke says it has passed all of his criteria and all the town stuff. Again, so I'll, I'll bring this up right now, there was another thing that Luke had an issue with, and again, it was the fencing, smoke detectors being needed.
Yes, you don't need one in the.
The crawl space. I don't know what he's talking about, but there was, there was a section in there that didn't have smoke detectors.
Yes, my basement doesn't have a smoke detector. He let me know that I should definitely have one. Which is great to know anyway.
Has that been corrected yet?
No, I will have to go out and get that, and also like a, a gas detector. Okay, and I was told I could get those right at the hardware store.
There's like one that does both.
Or the fire department could get you one too.
I think they've given all those away. I may be misspeaking here, but I think.
Yeah, definitely.
They do have a program where they go around.
The only other issue that Luke had that he asked me to bring up, and that's certainly beyond your control and ours, he's waiting to hear back from the fire department, because apparently they did the site visit also.
Right, yes, they were there too.
And he hasn't gotten his report back from the fire department. So obviously, he can't put his stamp of approval on that, nor can we. Until he gets that approval. So, does anybody need any more information on this, or are you ready to make a vote on it now?
How many children were you planning on taking?
Eight, maybe eight, nine, less than, less than twelve. How many children were I planning, I'm planning to watch?
Like you?
Yes, like eight, nine, after-school age. So like, I don't know, five to twelve?
Oh, you're not doing babies?
I've done that, myself.
Anybody need any more information?
So basically, what we're doing right now is just saying that in the zoning is okay.
Yeah, you're, we're saying you're okay as far as buck sports criteria is concerned. Your next move is we pass you along to the state, and those are the people you're really gonna deal with.
There's one in the school, there's one at, literally at the school, there was one at the Jewett School. I don't know if it's still there, I think they moved it up to the Mahl's Lane School now, the after-school program. But there's definitely more need for daycares, and so.
If someone is going to make a motion that we will approve it for our portion of it, there needs to be, again, the conditions of the retaining fence, smoke detectors, and still pending the full report from the fire department. Those three conditions would need to be met before. You could jump through the town's hoops.
Do we need a motion on this preliminary?
Yeah, I do need a motion subject to those conditions.
Motion to approve.
Okay, everybody aware of what the conditions we are, we're granting this conditionally, but it's on this. All those in favor are granting that on conditions. Those opposed?
I don't think we should even see a test plan.
Well, you're, you're fine as far as we're concerned.
All right, great.
Luke will be back in touch with you, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we've got B, subdivision review for Duke Family Farm. Honey folks, you've been through us before, so. Step up and introduce yourselves, just so people out in computer land will know.
I'm Elizabeth Duke, my husband Harold.
Surveyor Sean Mitchell.
Well, I need a business card for you.
Where Luke isn't here, could you just touch on the high points of, of your, of what you wish to do here for your subdivision and?
Yeah, we have nearly twenty-five acres, and after having the water tests done and the survey, it's gonna be five lots, including the home that we're living in. And Sean has drawn it out for the road with a turnaround, with driveways going off the turnaround. And we're happy to be moving ahead, and I brought a fee for the town. For the subdivision, so.
I'm assuming you've been touching base with Luke all along on this, so whatever it is that you have in your hand, has Luke already gotten a copy of? Okay, folks, any questions before we start on our level two review?
I think our questions are gonna be in that review, so.
You're, so you're selling four of the eight of the other lots, right?
Five out of the six, I think.
Four out of five. And you're keeping your house on Lot one? So.
Probably giving my daughter a lot too, so she has one too, so we're probably.
Are you gifting that, or are you?
Help our child build a home that should live with our child while we sell the house we're in now. Someday. It could take a while.
So, so Lot one will be on both sides of what's Foss? Are you going to just extend that, like the proposed road will be same name, you're not gonna change the name or anything?
Haven't planned on that.
And how far is that extension, like quarter of a mile?
I guess two thousand feet.
And to, it goes into that big cul-de-sac, and then after that, everybody's going to have to make their own driveway, however that lays out?
Yep, yep. I think there's lots four and five, there might be a shared driveway, depending on.
Would that be deed aid?
Yep.
Yeah, it's.
However, I'm not sure how the.
It goes all the way around like for Lot four?
I mean, yeah, Lot, I was gonna say Lot four, it looks like it will need a large driveway or.
If they build out back. Kinda looks like they, elevation a little bit there. So they'd have to kinda go up and then back down or build up with like a daylight or something.
That's probably the nicest lot.
No, that's right on the riverside, right? Are we gonna start the review, or do we have more questions?
And that proposed trail is just gonna be walking, it's not like ATV, or is it?
Yep, I just, I think it's just.
Yeah, just a general recreation area.
Yeah, we didn't do it on.
Right, for, for the, not for the general public though, just for the people here.
No, for the people that own the property then.
People of the subdivision.
That, that's an old road, an old Pink's landing road. And apparently, there is a public easement that goes to the railroad tracks. So that was essentially covering that same.
Okay, so just sort of already there?
Yeah, more or less, yeah.
Along with the proposed road, yes?
Yep.
Sort of already.
Sort of already there, there's definitely a defined road bit. That has not been used for quite some time.
It was a right-of-way to the property on the river.
Which is.
RPO, that.
Lucas didn't know that.
He did do all that?
I don't believe it's in here, but I'll be asking that. I agree, that's an important part.
Yeah, I was like, oh.
That's on the other side of the track, though.
Yeah, yeah, but then he has to go through, down that road, that right-of-way to get to his property, because it's landlocked.
I see that, yeah.
Unless he buys the one right in front of it.
And no one's living on that piece of property.
No, it's not.
I got a deal for you.
It's just a narrow strip down the river. From the tracks down the river, it's really not livable.
But it's taxable, so.
It's taxable, well. It's not my taxes.
Yeah, okay, well, someone's gotta own it.
This little one?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know. And I read that all of the lots had suitable. Like the soil tests were fine. It said, what, I think Lot five, there were two of them, I'm trying to remember, that weren't as good.
One point seven three is Lot five.
What, what, what it said in the report, but they all passed according to what it said, what I read. Was that, they all passed soil tests.
And wherever they build their house, it may be completely different wherever they.
Anyway, so. Think we're ready for a little bit of review, I guess.
Are there any property abutters here that wish to speak before we start our review process?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Are there any other, well, no, I know you're not an abutter. You are the only abutter.
That's a lot of land there.
And you're comfortable with everything, you don't need to be heard on anything, and. Okay, we just wanna give you a chance to speak. Abutters are a very important part of our process, and we always want to hear from property abutters. I, I can't believe it's changed, because Luke, of course, has been in on this code enforcement from the beginning, and any change would have to go through him, which would include him telling us about it, so. At one time, there are several, many more.
This way, we can have a home where you're not looking at your neighbor all the time.
It could have been one more, but we just didn't want it to have too many houses looking right at each other and.
Do we know, do we know if Luke?
Yeah, no, it's just going straight down now.
He's done all that stuff that he normally does. It was like.
Normally, we have it on the screen. Yeah, if you want, do you wanna see it, because that would be able to see the review? Do we have anybody that's called in? Anybody that's, anybody that's an abutter that called in or anything like?
No, no, as, as I recall, my memory serves, Luke did not hear from any other abutters. And there was a list of, I wanna say six or seven.
Yeah, I had talked to some of the neighbors and.
Did any of them come to you folks and say anything? Gee, I'm glad you're doing it, or what are you doing to our?
Next-door neighbor did, yeah, yeah. He came over, thought it was a great idea. He's looking at his property, and his value's gonna go up too, so.
Though he's super happy about it.
Yeah, it's a win-win for everyone, you know, I hope.
Okay, I guess we can begin our review. Where Luke is not here, usually we bounce our questions on him. It takes a while to go through this, and I, rather than have you folks stand up here for an hour staring at us, why don't you have a seat, and if we've got something that one of us have a question of, we'll ask you to come up and address it for us, would that be okay? Just so you'll have a chance to sit down. Yeah, are we ready to begin our documentation review? Lots and blocks. We've all been through these before, does anybody have any questions? Lots and blocks. Hearing none, I'll move on to the next one. Streets, anybody have any issues or questions about the streets or the roads or anything with this development?
You kept it already, it's already would have been in the deed, because it's described as a right-of-way correct, so I mean, it's, that's what, is that what I'm understanding? The road that's there, yeah, is already part of what's an existing right-of-way, so.
I guess it's my, my issue. I don't have my hearing aids in, and everybody seems like that whisperer.
Us or anyone?
Everybody here. I'm sorry. Do you wanna swap, we'd be in the middle of everything, George? Do you wanna, do you wanna swap chairs and be closer to like most of the people?
You think you might be able to hear better?
It's nothing better.
Okay, I will try to speak, usually I'm, I'm loud enough for two people.
Knock, knock, mumbles annoy.
Okay, thanks. Okay, streets, we've run, we've been through that, traffic and, and access management. I believe that the police department has reviewed everything, there's only gonna be one in and out off Route fifteen, is that correct? There won't be separate driveways in and out. Everyone will be coming in and out of Fox Road, Fox Farm Road to get to wherever they.
It's only adding four more houses, so it's not like it's fifty more cars pulling in.
Utilities.
That's not gonna be a public road though, is it?
We were hoping that the town would maintain the road.
Okay, I know originally in your preliminary, you, you brought that up, and of, of course.
There's no guarantee that, like, we can approve it, the town may, you can give it to the town, and the town council might vote it down, they might, they might accept the road. So it has to be.
I was gonna say, there's certain standards. That the road has to be built, which is quite a bit more expensive. That the road has to be built, which is quite a bit more expensive than if you, um, keep it like an HOA thing where everybody that's in there takes care of it.
Has contributed.
Yeah, like they pay for it.
Create an HOA.
As it stands right now with this submittal, it's a private road, correct?
Private road right now, yes.
So it's not applicable.
That's basically, yes.
Yes.
Except it, it's good to know.
Because if it wasn't, you'd have to have a lot of details to down here.
Right, so, but if you do wanna gift it to the town, you need to, um, you know, check what their standards are for accepting, it's gonna be what, sixteen feet wide drainage? I mean, I know I have a lot of stuff here, but, so.
Have you consulted with Jay Lanford at Public Works at all?
We have not at this point, we had made some calls several months ago, and nobody called us back, but we'll try again.
Just, so you're aware that when you start building this thing, and you start building this road, and all of a sudden, you wanna gift it to the town, and it's two feet too narrow, or you know, or something like that, and that's gonna be a mess for you folks, so I enjoy that. You're well aware of the specs.
Yeah, we, we've been looking at that, and a lot of it would, would depend on, you know, what we get the contractors and, and might to make it, so it is acceptable to town road specifications.
Um, the town doesn't, um, plow the road that's or, of the Foss Farm, I mean.
No, I do my little little tractor, it takes me about an hour, I have a blast.
No, but, so it's, now you're not extending a town road.
No, no.
Depending upon, like, how long that is, two thousand feet, and the costs associated with, like, building to town standards, it might be cost effective to just get a plowing contract, uh, but I don't know what that, what those costs are, so.
Okay.
But, just be, you know, be aware that you do need to check with the town on what it will take.
Well, at least that you guys know moving forward, kinda how you're gonna approach it going forward, whether you gotta put something in your deeds for, you know.
Yeah.
Or if you do plan on passing it over, so you're not, like you said, have your, have the road two feet too narrow and then you're.
So, uh, next session, utilities. Would have any questions on that, yeah, there's gonna be above ground, correct?
I don't think we can afford to bury you. I'd rather have him buried personally, if I.
I'm sure everybody would not.
No, there's.
See anything on there about the poles or anything?
Utility poles on the plan here, where they, where they, where you intend to put them.
Are we missing something?
No, I have not.
Okay, so that, um, but then again, we're not dealing with a public road, so I mean, this is, do you, do you see, I mean.
I, I agree, some of these things don't necessarily.
Have to be.
Yeah, so if they're gonna build a right of way, then that's.
Right.
I, I did show that what pulls that service that you have is.
Yes.
Just tack off on that one, yeah.
Okay, on that.
Groundwater, um, have they got any questions on groundwater or runoff or anything such, George?
No, I think they pretty well addressed it in the plan.
Um, on the utilities, there's not, I guess, wait, that's way up the river, oh, there's no town, no water.
That's great, not that, not that far, no.
We'll get to hydrants later.
Excuse me?
We get to like whatever, you know, hydrants and all that stuff later.
Oh, uh, it's not, there's no hydrant stuff, yeah, you're, you're about five miles south of the hydrant.
If there is a hydrant, it's gonna be from the, from the river. Stick it in the river and pump it up. That's your hydrant.
Okay, so much water in the well, we can stick a hydrant. This view of these lands, that.
There's really no documentation on groundwater.
I think that is. I'll ask you for to there, but I'm assuming that that area kinda.
Electric, I guess.
On lot five to the right beside, what they're saying is soil, there's like a little line, is that some runoff, like a little pond area, some wetland area? Down below on lot one, looks like you guys have, are you guys lot one correct?
Yes.
Your home, that's counting for a lot of the runoff, I think, is what I'm understanding.
It's right here?
Yeah.
And then up there on lot five, but that is, I don't know what that is.
That's what I'm asking us.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I don't see the key here.
I think that's wetlands, actually.
Love that little hatch area.
And then up there, there's a little streamy area, that's wetland.
On lot four.
There's like a spring right there.
Yeah, well. Four would be that area.
Several plans waiting to, maybe we oughta get like a look.
Do you have those, I mean, if, so.
I mean, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, so that's, that's wet, wet.
If you're.
That's a, I believe a stream.
A stream right here?
Yeah.
Here an extra one there? Oh, there's two copies, nice.
Hopefully there are three there, not a two.
No, there's two, yeah.
There you go.
You're in your elevator now, I can.
Yeah, and then you've got the wetland down the bottom, which looks like it's part of a stream, but on this one, it looks like it was wetland, I guess, that's a little different, I don't know.
So.
And is this area down here in lot two, that's wetland as well?
Is this like a pond?
Or?
Uh, I think it's like standing water.
Standing water?
There's standing water, okay.
Oh, wetland, can you, oh, I see.
Whatever, I, I got the information from Dave Moyes.
There's, there's lot one.
Who I've been working with for the soil.
This is lot one here.
Wetlands, um, that's all documented by him.
Mm-hmm. Still, it's still owned by, these are the same, right?
Mm-hmm.
They just put that road.
You're own, you're owning both sides of the road on lot one.
Okay, that's right, so.
Yeah. I don't think there's enough space on the other side for anything to be built, there's an old well there.
Okay.
And the power lines are along there.
On this side.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And all the houses would.
Anything else on groundwater?
No, I do, no, just figuring out.
Yep, again, I mean, I, that, I have a hard time with that question, cause it really depends on where they put the house.
Yeah.
Like, where are they gonna put their house on that land, this is just showing a lot.
If they're gonna put it like above, like two hundred feet above, like, uh, from the road, and they have all of that.
They, and they don't have the answers to that, so I think that's kinda hard for them.
Depends on the buyer, where whoever wants to build, and the builder, where they're gonna put the house, if they're gonna go all the way up on this side, you know.
Like, maybe they want more view.
More view of the river versus.
Their, their runoff's gonna be different than if they were down here in this bottom corner.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Does, I'm, I'm sure that's a Luke thing that.
Right, I mean, I feel like at the time of the building permit, that would be when you would say, where is your runoff going?
Setbacks too.
Yeah.
I say.
Okay, anything else on groundwater?
No.
Uh, wastewater?
Well, same thing.
Same.
Same thing.
Yeah, I mean, in the report here, it does say, um, there's, lots one, three, and four, most available area to typical bed type design for, um, subjects. Final location designed, each disposal system will depend on the final development plans in each lot. So, um.
Cause each lot will have their own design.
Mm-hmm. They're just saying that that lot, there's, it can have a, a house.
Yeah, cause it says the suitable soil, suitable soil.
So you, they are saying like in this area, they could put it there, but if the house was over here, and they wanted this, uh, here, and they needed it lower, depending on where the well is, you've gotta play with that, but.
Um, okay.
Ready to move on to the next one?
There, there are space, there are places on each of those, um, lots for subjects.
Yeah.
Yes.
According to the report here.
Oh, erosion.
Solid waste.
That's the subject design, the subject system.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't be applicable in this case.
I wouldn't think it would be applicable.
Everybody's responsible.
You're, you're not gonna have a dumpster or anything like that, so they're gonna kinda.
You go to the dump.
Yeah.
Uh, erosion control.
I didn't see anything in this, here, this was.
I didn't see anything.
About that. Um, it is on the river, but it is on the other side of the railroad track, I don't know.
There's two, two of the lots are affected by the RPL.
This one and this one, lot three and four?
I think it's just these.
All these ones, this one.
This is the RPL line, so it's just, this, I think, almost an acre in that lot, and.
It's very low there too.
Tiny.
And I think I, I had talked to Luke about the setbacks in those areas, um.
This is a question for you, what's, what does that stand for?
Resource Protection Overlay.
Just an overlay in our zoning?
From the, from the river.
From the river, yeah, okay.
Any questions on erosion control? Buffers. Will you have, be requiring any buffers like between?
You've got your setback on each.
Each line, yeah.
Whether some already exist.
Yeah, we're hoping that these lots are big enough that, that eventually there'll be trees, and people can have their privacy, you know, that's kinda.
I guess that's how they also decide, like, how they clear it out.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's what this kinda line is, around each one is the setback for each, yeah, so that's there.
Natural resources. Any place anything, or any natural resources would be affected?
I mean, you've got the river, but again, that's not even on their property, it's down across here. There's some streams that run through, but I don't see any. Way that would necessarily be affecting it again.
Not just standing, the standing water.
Standing water. There's no like animal reserves or some sort of.
No.
You know, owl that's gonna. If they did, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do this at all, if they.
There's a pile of old glass bottles somewhere back there, where friends are.
Yeah, the old bottle dump back there, I got a buddy that collects them, he goes out there and digs them all up. Take them, take them all.
And yeah, anything else on natural resources?
No.
Historic and scenic areas, are there any designated historic or scenic areas in your development area?
Not I'm aware of. Well, I mean, um, scenic would be the river, so, I think it does, if you're gonna be changing like the view from the river to the land, I mean.
Historic could be the bottles.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, I think that that, there was a, there was a law up on the river a little bit further, which had, prior to them moving the, air, with Arizona, it's just the graveyard, they had been some up behind on the river road, they had to disclose those things, there's nothing on the, on the land that you guys are aware of that might have gone back to historical.
Not aware of.
Not aware of, yeah.
You know, I'm trying, remember that, right up our past, yeah.
We ran into two, ran into two of those, it's seven of them, boy.
Yeah.
Um, it isn't like they're gonna be putting a junkyard, you know, um, someplace that's, so. I don't know, dumps or anything going here, I didn't, would be, I don't, I don't know what that would, that really applies.
I'm good with it.
Any more questions on that? Flood hazard areas, you go to flood zone?
Uh, we got a wet basement.
That's an old house.
Put the house in Sainte-Maine, it doesn't.
Do you guys have your FEMA map?
Your FEMA map, do you have that? You did? On the email?
I can get it.
I didn't see, I didn't see, I didn't see.
I was gonna say.
Um, here, I got this right here, let me see.
You got it?
You got it?
Yeah.
No, that's the other one, yeah, no.
Does it have the key?
Sorry, it's this one here, um.
Maybe, maybe you did.
I can try to look it up on.
This is, uh.
Oh, yeah, you did, just kidding. Yeah, you got it, you got it.
Yeah, is it in there?
It's not in a flood zone.
Yeah.
They're not. They're far enough away from.
Puzzle, there's any wetlands.
Wetlands.
Oh.
Estuary.
Their site's right here. Yeah, this is.
Basically.
Yeah, it gets down to, then a railroad is.
Uh, just on the other side of the railroad.
Yeah, you're just up on the other side, yeah, you're okay.
Any discussion on that one, folks?
I was just looking at. If they were to sell the lots, and whoever has it, like, they have to have these maps, it's required. Ten foot maps.
Think it's all gonna run down the road. For you.
Well, then.
Or down to the river. Yeah, I think this is okay here.
Yeah, I mean, they have the FEMA map, but it's not.
Still looking, Crystal, or are you all set?
I, you guys can keep going, I'll just.
Okay, uh, reserved land, is this applicable anyway?
No, I don't think it's like a.
Reserved land.
It's not like a land trust or anything.
Sure, with this particular subdivision, cause the lots are so big.
That's my thought, and also, anybody have any issues on reserved land?
Forty acre development, you had to have reserve land or something, but. Everybody's gonna have their own land.
Yeah. Financial and technical capability, uh, capacity, excuse me. Any issues?
Well, not that, not that I can see here, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, extremely technical.
From the bank here?
I mean, if, if you're building like an overlook of the Knott Scott River or something, you might need whatever structural stabilization, but that's not the case. Um, I don't know.
These are just residential lots, right?
Yes.
It's just single family homes, yeah.
Anything else on that, folks? Zoning and land use. Obviously, you were zoned for what you intend to develop, or you wouldn't have made it back out of Luke's office, so. Uh, anybody on the board get any questions with zoning and land use?
No.
Okay, the next one, clustered development? Really don't think that would be applicable here, do you?
Not applicable, it's just.
They're not sharing anything unless the, no townhomes or anything like that, the only thing that the potential is that driveway for lot five and six, but that's.
Are you guys having any restrictive covenants, like, are you guys gonna do anything like that, cause it, I mean, on the, I'm kinda going back to land use, but I was just wondering what you guys were gonna be doing for.
I hadn't really thought too much about what anybody that buys that property wants to do with, I figured I'd just keep my nose out of it, let them build.
But this is your, 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 your subdivision, so you get to design how, what type of houses that you want to be in there.
Some of these are very strict.
And I think, you know, they're in your backyard, so essentially, how many unregistered cars do you want?
I'm hoping not to see them in my backyard.
Somebody could wanna put up a five-story thing.
That's why, you have to have.
I'm probably not gonna like that. I have a hard time telling anybody what to do, but.
I mean, for, for example, some people don't want, like, they want modular or stick-built.
Yeah, stick-built, just like they're, like they're.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I don't wanna see a camper down in there.
Right.
That, like, those are things, like, if it's not registered, how many unregistered vehicles do you want, cause you don't wanna have, I mean, somebody could buy that lot and then have a junkyard and, you know, up there.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping you folks will say no to that.
We can't say no.
But if you have. But if you have.
They want, if they wanna open a junkyard, you know.
No, that's a business, then, 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 then we're into a different.
What's that?
Yeah.
So, when, when you form the housing association, you put all those rules in there.
Yes, that's your, your strategic, yeah, those are your covenants.
If you only want a purple house, as you could say it, if you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But that would be in that HOA, since you guys are a private road, you would lay out the rules and the regulations of, it's to any buyer, to any, that they need to follow that and maintain that.
And you can have them to any, you know, like as strict as you want, or just like, you know, reasonably, maybe like, you know, you can have one unregistered vehicle or something like that, so you don't have a fleet of them, or, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can talk about.
If, if I don't, if, if they're on my lawn and I don't see them, I don't care what they have.
You know, I.
I, I just, you know, I'm.
Can you, can you subdivide that lot anymore? Can you have an apartment above one? Can they have rentals on it? Can you have a?
Yeah.
We got them now.
Yeah, no, what I mean, it's, that's, you know.
Can you have a tiny home on it, you know, can they put six tiny homes out there? Can you ever, you know?
Could, could they, could they sublet, I mean, they're.
There's so many things that.
Could they build a duplex?
I mean, I suppose, you know, um, if, if, if they, if they want to.
So your plan as of right now is no restricted covenant?
I, I, I have a really hard time telling anybody what they can do with their own property, you know.
We've had some that were limited to one story, and you're only allowed to pick from certain colors, to have certain kinds of siding, and you, I, I, some of them get really.
I've seen them.
If you come in by those rules, you're welcome.
You can't have a outdoor, like, um, clothesline.
Clothesline, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but those folks aren't even gonna wanna move in my neighborhood.
Yeah, but outdoor clothesline, like, well done, they're hanging on the car, they're hanging on the car, they're hanging on the side of the porch.
Well, I mean, it will depend, I mean, it, you know, depends upon the kind of like, there are some places, like, I won't go there, cause there's a mobile home, you know, maybe you don't have those people anyway.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you get somebody that likes to collect broken down snowmobiles and have them, you know, whatever, I mean, there are those, like, some places that people look like they're running a junkyard, it's just like, they, you know what I mean, it, it, and maybe you don't wanna have it out front, you know.
Yeah, just.
There's one property that's there, that our property is surrounding it, because quite a few campers, people living in campers.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we already have that going on, and we wouldn't be able to make that rule for that person.
Well, we don't own that property.
They, they're not part of it.
That's our, that's not our business.
You can make it for your lots that you're subject, they're already there.
And, and you have to remember too, like, you wanna sell these lots, right? So you wanna make them, you wanna increase.
As presentable as possible.
Right, so if somebody that goes in there and goes, well, I don't want the neighborhood to look like maybe that the other parts of the area look like, or maybe they do, maybe they want to be able to do that, and they're gonna pick that lot depending on what they want for their needs. So just kinda, just thought, food for thought.
Even to like, yeah, and, and if you can, there are, you can use, you know, grab other subdivision, um, covenants and see what they put, and then use that as an example, right? So that way, you're like, okay, I like that idea, I wanna implement it in my subdivision. And then, I don't like that idea, but let's try to work around that way. That way, your buyer for the, these lots already know, they have to know this right away, because A, it probably depends on their lending.
Yeah.
As well too, so if they can't, if their lender can't finance it, then that buyer can't buy your, like, you know, there's so many different things you're, you, the more stuff that you, the way you wanna design it, the better is for you to get that, the way, you know what I mean, the way how you guys see fit, how you wanna see your land being used, and yes, you want single family, then strive for that and use those examples.
Right, cause I mean, right now, somebody could buy that.
Would like to see single family homes in there.
But if you don't put that restrictive covenant in there.
I don't have anything against duplexes, or however people wanna live, however.
But you could have a four unit down there.
And you, do you want?
I'm not gonna live in one. I, 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 I'll live in my car first.
And there, I mean, other things too, like, maybe, like, you can't be cutting your grass at five o'clock on the.
You know what I mean?
The snowblowers.
The snowblowers.
Don't, don't run your mower till after eight AM, or whatever.
I think that's why they want the tree buffer.
No, but I mean.
We still wanna keep, maintain some privacy, and we're hoping to charge enough for those lots that the folks that wanna put a mobile home up there aren't gonna buy those lots.
Right, yeah.
You know.
Well, this is just one easy way to make sure that doesn't happen. Call it confidence, you know, so that's.
Yeah, put a covenant on it.
You know, this is all new to us, I mean, it's all.
But these are just ideas, I mean, I think that's a great idea, look at some other, you know, areas and look at their covenants and decide, you know, some of them are out there, like, you can't have a co, you know, clothesline, but some of them are just like, you can't have a home past a certain age that's up here, you know, it has to be.
And it could be in your survey too, like, you, he can put it on your survey, and these are the covenants, you know, and then it'll be on your deed and on your HOA, so that way you're covered. And that way, everybody knows upfront what they can and cannot do on that land.
Yeah, just some ideas.
Just some ideas.
Very good.
Very good, anything else on that section?
Nope, nope.
Last section, mobile home park.
See, okay, see? See, that's what I'm saying, like.
Which is not really applicable.
Yeah, we're, we're not within five miles of the center of town, so that's, you can't have one up there anyway.
Unless somebody wanted to buy one of the lots and squeezes many mobile.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're talking about a four acre lot.
Well, they wanna be really quiet and put it somewhere I don't see it.
These are four acre lots, can they be subdivided again, you know, I, I'm not familiar exactly what the zoning is there, but it might be, I think it's an acre.
I think, isn't it every?
One acre lots is the, right, so one acre lots, so that, that lot, lot three could be subdivided four times.
Isn't it every so often it can only be divided every?
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, they could make a subdivision, they could come here and say, I wanna make this four acre lot.
They might need to, they may have to put two more houses out there someday. They might do the same thing I'm doing right now.
I'm not saying it can happen, I'm just saying, if those are things you could say in your covenants.
You know, I mean, somebody could wanna put, like, I, I, I wanna rent to people who have to commute to Bangor, so I'm gonna build like a six unit, right? And have a apartment, put, put an apartment building there, and, you know, that's, now you're talking about a lot more traffic in and out. So that's, you know, I mean, that's, if you don't want, if you prefer to have a single family lot, I mean, that's the kinda stuff to think about, but if somebody said, wow, this is close to Bangor, I'd love to develop like, you know, five, six unit things, that's gonna bring you a lot of rent and, you know.
Especially like this lot.
Yeah, that lot, this one, this one.
This one, cause you've got the hill, right? I'm assuming based off the.
They have a river view, then, then you, like, someone's gonna come in and think they can charge premium. Right now, instead of having a few families, then now you're dealing with a whole community.
Like I say, my kid's gonna be living in one of the houses there.
It's, it's a good community anyway.
Yeah, it is.
Think about it, right, and, and so.
Right there by Mill.
Ten minutes.
Who knows, like, somebody may come in and go, whoa, she looks like in a river view, I could put up a six unit. And, uh, make, you know, and if people, if it's got that, some advantage of that, like the view or what have you, like, you never know. But if you don't want it that, you know what I mean, you could use, say, you know, you can.
I'd rather see somebody put a really nice home up there.
Oh, so you can, you can write that, you can write that into.
Right.
Just no more, you can't subdivide it, you know, you can't.
You can put that in your restrict, in your covenants too, they cannot, cannot be subdivided.
Subdivided, whatever the situation may be. Because if not, like, you guys had one original of, what, nine?
Yeah.
So.
We, then we looked at the wetlands and all that and got down there.
Yeah, soil testing.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not saying it could, that nine could go, or three more could go in there, but they could, they could subdivide it.
Oh, I'm sure you could get, you probably could get three, three or four more in there, but it's a lot more expense.
Uh, just thought, just thought, you know, for you guys going down the road from here further, then things, like, once you start selling them, you're gonna wanna have those.
You're gonna want, you're gonna want all of that for each lot, all of those things.
Okay, sounds to me what, what our group down there has recommended is you develop a little covenants to go along with this.
Well, if you want to, I mean, I'm just saying that.
Well, it's not a bad idea, that's not a bad idea.
Because you're the one that's in the front, you know what I mean?
Okay, folks, we've gone through a list of eighteen criteria for this, and we've just completed the last one, and I guess we didn't find any really big issues on any of them, so what we do, to do now on conclusions, we have to vote on all these. Uh, do you wish to vote on everyone separately for all eighteen? Or can you just say that you, you were satisfied that the, uh, the privates have been met? Anybody's wishes, Terry, what do you think?
I'd say just group it all together and do one vote.
Okay, sure.
I know, I had a couple of, typically, you have to do each one with a level two review.
What's that?
We, we've gotten kind of.
Technically, on a level two review, each one has got to be separate.
That's right.
Um.
Technically.
Why'd he ask me?
I wanted to hear what Chad said. Yes, Mark.
Well, no, I just, I mean, as we go through, I decided, like, some questions, there's some things, not in their locations, or utility boards, all that sort of stuff.
It really is nice having Luke here, because with all these questions, like the one you've got here in polls, I'm sure that's something Luke is already, already on that, I'll settle it.
Right, but, okay, so let's just say they put a pole here, somebody might have to put a pole here, because you can only go so many feet, and then you have to have a pole, maybe they wanna go on the ground.
The thing is, where it's private and not, and not public way, I mean, I, I don't know what the, I'm sure the, the power company has restrictions on poles. They don't wanna, want every two feet, and they don't want one two thousand feet apart, I'm sure, it's gonna be a, yeah.
Thinking about the poles across the street from the hardware store where they're like.
I just shudder to think about.
Yeah, they're two feet apart.
What is up with that?
I mean, that, there's a solar farm up there.
Is that what it, why? They're that close? The poles are that close? They're like.
I don't know what the, I don't remember why, why we believe, that's definitely, they're building a solar generation farm out there.
Yeah.
So, that's, but there's a lot there, so, um, um, if you.
I was gonna say, that's not me, but.
No, it's, it's my sister, and I don't mean to talk.
Oh, you got one of those too.
So, any case, um, for example, like, you happen to sell lot, you know, the, the furthest lot last, I would imagine there would be already some poles placed.
Yeah.
But now, if you sell the furthest lot first, now, like, they, they have to, like, arrange to put the cost of, like, all the, who, who's gonna pay for that?
That's the buyer.
That land better have a lot of money.
That's what I'm saying.
To get down there, I got, I went to my place, you know.
So, 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 so that, so that's an extra cost that's gonna be borne by whoever buys the lot.
Yeah.
Right, and if you buy that, if you buy the furthest lot, you're going to put up, like, extra poles, everybody else maybe can tap onto, or maybe not, because you haven't specified that, so, so, um, if you get the lot that's way, you know, close to the river, and they wanna, like, build as far back as they can, that's, you know.
You have to reach.
So typically, yeah, I think typically, uh, Luke is saying that the owner pays for the poles, so.
So.
The owner of the subdivision, so maybe you would put the.
Is that the same with sidewalks out there?
No, you can't, we can't require sidewalks, I mean, I think it's nice if you wanna put sidewalks, but.
I'm not saying it requires, but I mean, who would be paying for it? I mean, owner in sections, everybody that buys a lot?
He's.
Well, no, it's, I mean, if you wanted to put sidewalks, then you could do, I would do that as, like, the part of the development, um.
You guys, you're not paving it, you're, is it gonna be gravel?
It's just a gravel, right?
Yeah, so I don't think there's gonna be any sidewalks, but.
Which, which is, which all kinda goes into the thing about deeding the road to the town, and all, you know, the setback and the,
Yeah.
you know, the soft shoulder or whatever, and the drainage, I mean, there's, there's a lot, a lot to that, so.
I seem to think it has to be paved though.
Since, since the roads aren't allowed to take it, I think.
I believe so, I don't, I do not know what the, but there is like, a certain levels of gravel, the type of, like, there's a lot of different things that go into the town taking over the road, based off just what I know.
I don't know how anxious the town would be to wanna take over the road.
Well, and I mean, I don't know, it might need to be tarred, I think, but.
I think that's what, was it?
I think with the slope, it would be better off tarred, anyway, but, yes, I, Luke really led me to believe it has to be tarred.
I'm fairly certain that's the case.
Even if it's not, it has to do with the size of the subdivision, I think.
There's certain requirements on how the road is built, I do know that much, and I believe, I'm like, fairly certain that it does need to be tarred, but. But as far as that goes, as far, going back to the pole situation, um, Luke just messaged me and said that it is, he's listening, so, we're on Big Brother here. He said that it is usually the owner of the subdivision that pays for those, those poles, so.
Yeah, so to have somebody that, like, will, like, a common area road, somebody like, a private homeowner, they paid to put them in, who owns it, right? You see, it, it gets into that, it gets into that gray area, so I, I, I just think there are maybe a few things.
I don't wanna take.
But a few, a few things maybe further to really, like, think through.
I think that with the poles, it, it really depend on, you know, the road and who's putting the, you know, the, what the power company has for, I'd say, I don't know what they require for holes, um.
Even just straight down.
Okay, folks, we have to cut into, but let's, uh, let's take care of our conclusions, just because we've got eighteen to go through, and, uh, I'll go through them one at a time. We're gonna take a vote on them, each one individually, so, don't sit back and wait for someone else to make the motion, okay? I'm gonna be in Russe County by tomorrow morning, so, if, if, if you're comfortable with it, go ahead and make a motion that you, that, that it be approved, and we'll second it and go from there, or turn it down, or whatever, everybody all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, criterion one, lots and blocks.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Criterion two, streets.
Um, I'm feeling like we would need more information here, because the way it's like, they'll comply with minimum construction requirements for any of the streets. Like, there's just not enough information on that at this time, that would be a.
Well, if it's a private way, we can only do so much. That's, that's the issue. I hear what you're saying, and I, I, I guess I'm not gonna argue with you, but if, if it's a private way, we really don't, we're a big, we're a lot of control with that.
Yes, I, um, if you wanna approve it, with the idea that there's no guarantee that the town's going to accept it.
Exactly.
Right, and I think probably they're quite well aware of that going.
I understand that, yeah.
Just because you approve it, doesn't mean the town is going to say, great, whatever, so.
I mean, our intent is to, is to build the road to town specs, so if they do decide to take it, they can, that's our intent.
Be the way to attack it, I would think, yes.
Your intention is to build the road, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you're gonna build it, it's gotta be town specs?
That's right, that way it's either, either way, so it's a win-win.
It's, it's not in anything written down, otherwise, that's, that's my thing, that's all.
So we're.
Criterion two, streets.
So we're gonna approve that with the condition of you're getting the approval from the town, that if that's the way you guys decide to go, that it's approved by them on them taking it over, or if you decide to go private. Is that what I'm understanding, guys?
Yes.
Is the condition of that?
Right, that it will not be accepted by the town unless it's built to town spec, specifications, that's, that, that's.
Conditional problem, yeah.
Kinda wordy, but.
Okay.
Anyone second that yet?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, so, Crystal, maybe that one.
Those in favor? Criterion three, traffic and access management.
Make a motion to approve?
I second. Did you have any questions on that, George?
You have any questions on that?
No.
No, no questions. All in favor? Criterion four, utilities.
I think that's, uh, by my understanding of where I'm talking to Luke is, is that would be a condition, um, you don't have to have it on the designs, but it does, um, and the town will not accept it unless, so the road, going back to that, the town won't accept it unless it's paved to, and it's two specs, so that's what you're saying. Um, but typically, that, those poles would be provided by the person doing the subdivision, so going down the road, so just talk to CMP.
Get a price and see what they.
And then you can just figure, figure it right into the price of the sale of the lot.
Yeah, of the lots, yeah.
You know, put in six poles, and then from that, from the road, they go on to wherever they are on their lot.
And you can disclose that too.
Yeah.
Price includes utility pole.
Is, is that what you're, is that your intent at this point?
Yeah, I, I, yes.
Like, like, I was gonna do the road, now I'm gonna do the poles.
Yeah, gotta have the road first, and then go from there, you know, um.
I mean, and CMP may go, oh, the problem here with doing this, or, you know what I mean, that's not gonna work here.
We might sell that back lot to somebody that's got a lot of money, and they really decide they want their power buried.
They'll bet, yeah.
I'm gonna encourage them to go ahead and do that, you know.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I don't know what, what your view is, if you can see the river, but you.
You can see the river from my living room, we're, we're up high.
Are you looking through any, any power lines or poles?
No.
Okay.
No, they're.
No, we, no, and we wouldn't, when they went down that road either, cause they'd be off to the, to the, the north of us.
Okay.
And, so we're on the other side.
Utilities, folks, yeah, you know.
I'll second.
All in favor?
But that does.
Are we doing conditions or no? Are we just?
Utilities, only we can do conditions.
Well, well.
Only, only if, uh, if it's a condition that the town has a point taking over.
The proposed subdivision will be provided, required with utilities for each lot. So that's right, that's, which is not in their plan, so that's, or wasn't, like, you see what I'm saying, that first sentence? They're not providing, if, if they're going to have somebody else do, like, put the poles in. Right, that's, they're not, they're not providing a basic like utility to the, it's a.
To the lot.
To the lot.
Okay.
Right, so, so that, according for us to accept that, the way, what, the way it reads is. Utilities will be provided with required utilities for each lot, so the required utility here will be electric.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, that's, I believe, a condition of approval, for approval.
It's fine if you self, or don't wanna vote it, that would, all those in favor of that?
So that, that would be the condition, cause it has, wasn't previously noted, there was no, we didn't see like the position of the poles on the diagram anywhere, you know what I mean? That would be typically, we, we would see that, so.
Why do they need these dots?
Those are gonna be pins, um.
Okay, that one, that's an old pin that was.
You know what I mean?
I would say conditional, I would say it's conditionally approved. I know it requires.
Yeah, make, make, make that as a motion, yeah, that would work.
Conditional approval. After the road is maybe surveyed, surveyed and whoever, CMP comes in and says this is, you know, or the, somebody that knows better. Let's say the poles are gonna be here, here, here and here. I mean, they can look at the way it's surveyed and what would make the most sense.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, I, I would give a conditional approval pending that, you know, um. A better diagram of where, how, how the utilities will be laid out.
Anyone wanna second that motion?
Additional approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Groundwater.
Question?
I was just gonna say we should skip that one and come back. I'm waiting for Luke to say what we can, what he felt, what we should. On the utilities one. I think we should just keep going, come back to that one.
All right, we can table, we can table.
I just think we just need to wait a second and then. It's not required, he says, but we can if we choose to.
Okay.
Criterion five, groundwater. Anybody got any issues?
I mean, that's, the buyer is going to install the well themselves. And they're gonna call a drilling company. Well, you have the soil test, which is fine, but wherever they're gonna place the well, it, you know. Whether it's in the front or the back, it's really up to that buyer now, so I don't think. There should be an issue unless.
I don't think you're gonna be doing anything that's gonna affect, like, the groundwater's not gonna be, it's not like they're pushing all the water down to the bottom of the hill and there's. Some sort of like farmland down there and they're gonna, so I, I'm, I'm good with that. What are you guys?
Yep.
I mean.
Motion to approve then, or do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is the kinda thing where, um, Michael excels and, um, I mean, he's, he has a lot of expertise in this. But there's like, where does it, you know, when it rains, where does the water drain, um, when the snow melts, where is it going to go? Um, although those sorts of things weren't, typically, we would know that, um, we would have.
Well, if they were building, we would, but we don't know where the buildings are going, so right now, it's going wherever it's been going.
Naturally where it goes.
Naturally, but if they were, if for a building design, then we would be looking at something different, where if they were building. A property on it, but for right now, they're not doing anything to land other than just.
Okay.
That's, I mean.
That's.
Makes sense.
All right.
I move to approve.
All those in favor? Waste water.
Same.
Same.
Same thing.
Same thing.
I have a motion to approve.
All those in favor? Solid waste.
They're not doing anything. You guys aren't gonna do anything with that. They're not doing trash.
Junkyard or nothing. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Erosion control. Are you comfortable with that, George?
Well, if we're building the road and all of that, we'd be more concerned about it, but. Not, not having the road as part of the subdivision is really creating some issues.
Yeah.
Terms of, of, you know, whether we're gonna approve it or not, because it's, uh. That's a big issue.
It won't be an issue until, until it's built. Yeah, it won't be an issue until it's built, so. How about it, folks?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Buffers. Anybody ever, did anybody have an issue on that? I think we're convinced it's gonna be plenty of buffers there.
These are here. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Natural resources.
Non-applicable is on.
It's not.
I believe that would be non-applicable. Scenic and historic areas. Have you determined there were none?
None.
Motion?
Approve. I'll second.
All those in favor? Flood plan management.
It's not a flood plan.
It's not applicable.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. Reserved land.
It's not, nothing's a restricted recreational use or anything. There's no like.
There's no land trust.
Common area for them, so.
Not applicable. Financial and technical capacity.
Think they, you guys, can you guys afford to do the road?
Figure it out one way or another.
Zoning and land use.
The financial and technical part, are we just not applicable, or are we saying? Conditional on the road?
I mean, how do we know? I mean, I'm not gonna look at their bank, you know, so I mean, if they say they can afford it, they can afford it, so. I guess, um, we can move to approve it.
Yeah.
It wasn't an issue before.
It wasn't. George?
The financial. Zoning and land use.
Financial and technical.
I'm sorry?
Financial and technical.
Oh, we're going back?
We didn't vote on it.
I thought we did too.
Oh, you did? I did? Okay.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion on the financial and tech.
The statement I made before, it really was.
The road?
The road is the big cost of, of the subdivision, really, other than the work that you've already done, you know, the survey and all that. But that's gotta be there, but without the road construction in there. It's not a big cost, you know, for the other stuff, so I.
But these aren't even surveyed? Officially surveyed?
Yep. Pins for the individual lots and not, that.
Okay.
The existing.
Oh, for the individual law, yeah, no.
Their lots have been.
Okay, all right, but the, this, it's, that's not just like hypothetical.
No, no, yeah, that's all surveyed, the lines, the perimeter is marked, uh, the internal ones are just waiting on.
So George, are you saying like if it's, the road is for public, is it gonna be, so, their idea is to give it back to the town?
Then it will be public road.
Then it will be a public road. And then we change what we're, have to look at versus if it's a private road? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if it's gonna be a public road and connect the town, then they have to build the town standards, and we all know what that is, with the paving and.
Right.
The drainage.
It's an expensive proposition, and that's where we usually get into requesting financial.
And, and the drainage, cause you gotta know where that's gonna go, and the culverts and stuff.
I'm sorry.
And the culverts, culverts.
You know, it, it, it's hard to really approve a subdivision without a road.
What's this, what, what do you guys wanna do? I mean, I guess we can prove, approve it conditional on that being a public, a private road. And then if they change it and they wanna go public, then you have to review it again.
That was kinda what, the, what I was thinking, is we start out with a dirt road.
Yeah, we'll come back.
And then, and, and as, as we get going, you know, we wanna make sure we, we try to build it up to the town's back, so maybe pave it down through, but we wanna start out.
This is not gonna be something that's gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen today, no.
You may be in this for years.
Yeah, I know.
Or you even reach the point where you'd say, gee, we'd like to have the town.
That's exactly it, but we do wanna get the, kinda the specs from the, what the town would require. At least, you know, make sure that it's got the right bed and the right drainage and all that, so.
conditional on it being a private road, and if you guys wanna go public, then it has to come back for approval.
Yeah, then we'll do that later on.
Okay, and then then we can go into.
Can you make it into a motion?
All right. Making a motion that, that, that is. Conditional approval, that it's gonna be a private road, and then I think further than that, we'll have, we'd need more information, okay?
You better wanna second that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Zoning and land use.
We talked about the land use, right? Like, thinking about your covenants and what you guys wanna do and doing all that. Conforms applicable provision, but, yeah, off of town code. Pretty, this is pretty.
Something out of line for what the town comprehensive plan is and.
Did I miss anything?
Are you good? Are we good to approve that?
We, uh.
For zoning and.
Zoning, yes, zoning and land use, we all settled on that.
Motion to approve?
I'll second. All those in favor? Cluster developments.
I feel like that's applicable.
I would say it's not applicable either. Mobile home parks. Okay, folks, we've reached a conclusion, compa- a part of this, so.
I mean, there is approved with conditions, there's an option here.
We already have, and, yeah, and, and the road, of course.
Can we skip one because you're waiting for feedback from Luke?
That was utilities one. And that was basically up to us whether, and I think again, like all of it, well, a lot of this goes back to the road. And they're not doing underground utilities. If you wanna make it conditional, is what he said, we can. That they provide us information on where the poles are gonna be, or it sounds like we can just. That, that's under the understanding that usually that it's done by the subdivision. Owner, but if they, I don't think that there's necessarily a requirement that it's done by.
Um, yeah, do you think conditional approval on the utilities or no, doesn't, like, what, I mean, you can do it any which way.
I, I mean, I don't really care. I, I don't.
I don't either. I don't really.
I think my only, my only point was, um, when you're doing multiple lots like this, it's good to have somewhat of a plan from, you know, that it's not kind of haphazardly done. You do one lot here and then one lot there, you're running like needless, right, that's, they wanna minimize that, because now you're gonna like maintain that, right? And then you're gonna make sure like this, I mean, how many lines are you gonna have running across the property? So it just, it needs to be thought out better, I think. And, um, anyway, that's, but that's, but if everybody's gonna pay for that, like.
My thing with that, oh, my only, would, that would kinda depend on who buys that lot.
Yeah.
Because if I buy lot four, then I wanna put my house over here, and I wanna go underground, and she wants to buy life four, and she wants to put it over here. And then she maybe wants to sell it, because they didn't put anything in their restrictive covenants and have a right of way in there, and you, then now you're gonna have a different pole, it's a different system. I just don't know how you would show that here. I can see maybe on the road, like showing poles on the road, uh. Bringing it down to the lots and then from the lots.
But that, that would be.
Right.
That how it works, right? I mean.
The buyer, lot four, if they build all the way back here, they're responsible for adding more power to get to reach that end.
Do it conditional, they provide, that they show us where the poles are gonna go. On the road.
So, so you get that, uh, uh, you know, a, a plan of where the poles will go up to the property.
Up to the property lines along.
On the road, yeah.
Okay, folks, the conclusion is we have free, uh, three options. Proposed subdivision is approved, approved with conditions, or deny? Anybody wanna second that motion as approved with conditions? All those in favor of approved with conditions?
I was just gonna say that I, I just list off the conditions.
Uh, I think we have roads being a private road and the utility pole.
Right, so that's the conditions that we're approving on.
That, and I would say, I mean, uh, uh, I mean, I know like the groundwater thing, but that comes in with the roads. Like drainage, all of that sort of stuff is usually, you know, you have, like, you can answer those sort of questions. What, once you talk to like a road, who's ever gonna put the road in for you, but, um, you know, that's all goes along with. So other things tie into that in an ancillary fashion, but like, especially if, if you want it to be a town road, you just like, they wanna know where's the water gonna drain into? Is it gonna drain into this, in neighbor's well or something like that? So, and that, so it all sort of has to be thought through a little bit more.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, you could say that, but I mean, there are things that flow from the road.
To direct it into the existing stream that's there.
Right, so, so, so if you had somebody put a road in, and we didn't consider it like groundwater, like if you put, like the road salt starts leaching into your neighbor's well. Now you've created a problem.
Right.
So, right, where, where the road is not fully thought out, and, and the drainage, all of that stuff has to be thought out. Um, you know, or at least planned out anyway, and so that's, that's a little nebulous at this point, little, little cloudy, and, um.
Well, I mean, I, I, I personally don't know how to build the road, I've got a higher contractor to do that. Not, and, and that'll all have to be approved.
Right, but, yeah, but, but, yeah, but that's all stuff that people think about, so, I mean, it's a little bit more than just building a driveway, right, you're just paving something.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I.
So, cause when you start, especially with the town, where they're gonna be throwing salt and sand and whatever on it, now we gotta like consider how. You know, how that affects the, the environment around it, and it's still, like, hitting somebody else's, you know, well or one of the other butters, you know?
So, and you already have a two rod right away within that, where the new road's gonna be, that this person back here already owns.
Already had, yeah, yeah.
So that has to be maintained, even if you're gonna build a new road, I mean, you gotta maintain his access, so.
Well, I don't think you have to, you, he did, they don't have to maintain access from X to there, it's just a right of way, that person that has the right of ways. I'm assuming the deed does not require you to maintain it.
Truck all the way down there.
But, but in the deed, it's not required that you guys maintain it, he maintains it, he has to plow it if he wants to get through or how, right?
Is that what? Before we cleared the trees on the land, one could argue that the road was non-existent any for, anymore.
That original, that original road has been encroached on and moved out of the way.
Yeah.
Some, somebody built close, too close to the line. I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus, but somebody did that, and. So that right of way got moved, and it's got trees growing up through the old right of way, so it's.
That's, I'm assuming, up here towards the beginning of the road?
Up there, but even for.
It's been moved over, so.
So, I believe that the road going down to the tracks was last used before automobiles.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, the old Hinks Road.
Is it, is it in their deed, is it, do they have to maintain it? Or is it the person who's using it?
No.
That they have vehicular or not, or pedestrian access.
Okay.
But it doesn't say anything about.
That this person has access? So when you guys did these plans, did you rearrange the, the right of way up at the top of the entry?
Nope, none at the entry, no.
So.
This, whatever's proposed here is, is within that where the old road was.
Oh, this little thing right here.
This garage.
Yeah, right, right here.
Is what was built in.
That encroached on, in the, yeah, okay.
So that's why, what they were talking about being pushed over.
So this little slither thing pushed over.
Yep, this, this is the.
That new.
Outside existing.
But that's right in the garage.
Yep.
It, it certainly is.
And I think the other thing too, that we had discussed also is having some recreational land. Remember, there was a.
Like a trail?
Trail, yeah.
So this would be.
And that is that same trail runs down.
That's a continuation of.
So I have one quick question, I just, I didn't realize this was a garage encroaching on the road.
See that, yeah. Is that stair there still?
No, you're right, fire truck probably cleaning it down.
So, so the reason I asked this is because right now, the road. Right here, right where the garage is.
Calling a chopper from California.
Well, no, I mean, no, I'm just saying, but you have to bring a tanker if, should there be a fire, but you, I mean, it's, it's, it's not feasible to just draw water from the river, really.
I don't think it's required that we have, um.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm thinking like, it would have to be a tanker truck if there was a fire out there.
Oh, right.
It would have to be.
So I think.
Forest service has got two, 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 uh, choppers that will do much more. Forest service has got two, two, two uh choppers that will do much more work.
This is your house lot?
Well, no, I understand, but but if there's a house fire out there, like you have to.
Old house, while we're talking about buil- a building, oh, there should be roads there.
Right, and then, so so if you want that, like, you wanna get a fire truck down there, it's not gonna go down there, right? It has to have like a place to turn around, like emergency vehicles, that sort of stuff, if someone's, you know, you gotta get an ambulance.
That stuff, it would have to pass muster with Luke.
This whole.
Right, so so, so that's, if there was ever a fire in one of those places, it has to be a road, a fire truck can get down and turn around. And I know those, I I know like this.
And then we're, we're gonna have a cul-de-sac, I mean, you should be able to turn one around in there.
Yeah, right, and a town plow.
So the only question, the reason I asked that, is because if you can kick this over.
So that's, that's where I think the road needs to be.
While you're reevaluating the survey, kick your road over here.
Okay, folks, we got bogged down here, so let's get down to business.
Because right now, the road right here is not wide enough, right, because you have a garage, well, no. We have a garage on the road, we're trying to figure.
We've got a vote pending right now that we we need to take care of, and then we can talk later, though, please.
Well, this is part of it.
Okay.
It's conditional on the road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So wait, what do you, what is it?
She, there's a garage on the road right now.
On the road?
Well, it's, it's.
Old road.
In the old road.
On the old road, yeah, the.
You can see how it would come in and go here, so you see how the neighbor built an addition on his garage that went where.
Right on the line.
Right on the line, so you've gotta have, you've gotta scooch.
So the road's gotta move over.
You're gonna scooch the road over.
I think for that reason, it's always gonna be a private road.
That's what I'm saying.
Now, now we're, now we're, but you still, I, you have to like have it to the point where you can get a fire truck.
Right.
Down, down there, right, I mean, it's so, so it's, it's.
Yeah, I think that you could get a fire truck down there, that would be fine, it's not Route fifteen, though, you wouldn't wanna have, you know, multiple traffic going in both directions.
Or an ambulance or something, whatever.
Right.
I think the biggest thing right now that we have to worry about, just staying on the road situation and not on the river road, is this garage that is encroached on the road that you're proposing.
Well, that's the neighbor's garage.
Yep, right, so the drive, so this road needs to be shown over here, more onto this lot.
This side, like, this part.
On, on, on the lot.
Onto lot one.
Yes, because right now, there's a garage that's on the road.
This garage, this garage is in the way. This needs to be widened a little bit.
And you've gotta have a ten foot setback from that.
Move over.
You're gonna, this has to be a ten foot setback off of this.
Because that small little building that's there on the other side is a temporary building.
That's not there, that's just a, there's a cement pad here, that's gonna come up, we're gonna move.
You're gonna curve this out this way, yeah, 'cause this needs to have a ten foot setback, what you said.
We've thought about that.
Yeah. So that way, this doesn't be.
So we could just have the neighbor move his house.
Or take down his little addition.
You gotta get into title, you gotta get in your title insurance on that one.
Yeah, yes, that's how it should be.
But I think that goes back to the road and the conditions on the road, I think we need to be able to.
Yes, and then that's why.
Can we just, can we just see that next and move over?
Fix the road and um.
Because right now, you've just gotta scooch that.
I'm glad you're here.
Cause we gotta know there's room, because you've got a house, you've got a corner of a garage here, you, the barn is gone, but there's a concrete barn or something.
There's a slab, right, that should be ripped up on the road.
We just need to know that.
This needs to be ten feet away, like the, but like, there has to be a setback from the neighbors.
Yeah.
For the road.
Yep, and I'm totally fine with doing that, it's, so that's what they need to do, there's gonna be like a sliver that's gonna be on the other side of the road possibly from.
From, on this side?
Nope, on the, because they technically own to the center, and there's an easement for this garage, um, from, that's where it was.
That garage is pissing me off.
No, well, I mean, so basically, what all I'm just saying is that instead of following the easement that's there, using that road, I think you, for the sale of this, because if not, you're gonna get into a whole lot of issues with in, with um title insurance.
You should just give them that piece.
I think you just need to move the road over, I mean, you guys see what we're talking about with the garage on the road?
Well, that is one of the conditions, if the road is got to be.
Get it moved over.
Or redesigned.
Yeah.
Just redesigned, yeah.
Just scooched over, I think that's probably the best bet for future.
And and from that, when you get that officially, I mean, it's not, the road's not been surveyed or laid out, and and, you know, so, and that takes, you gotta like, take all that into consideration, then they'll, that's when they get into like, where's the run up, where's the, the, the snow gonna melt, where's the whatever, you know?
Essentially, this is where the road currently was.
Right.
Right.
But but if, but if you're putting it in there, you know, that and your, the other stuff, like the fire department's gonna say, we can't get it in.
I mean, you guys know where your lot is, you know where you drive, but when you're buying, you're selling another lot and somebody needs to go through there, you don't want them saying you're driving in my land, or you're driving on, you know, you just wanna make sure that the.
It's all defined and clear.
Yeah, for you guys, for the sale, you know, selling this.
For your future, yeah.
So I think we just condition on that.
Approved with those conditions?
Yep.
So.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor of approving with those conditions? Those opposed?
Great.
You can proceed with your project.
Thank you.
You didn't offer anything for us to sign tonight? Uh, that does not go to us. Uh, what you need to do is check with Luke as soon as you can, hey, that's who that check would go to.
Okay.
And then uh, there, there's some, there's some uh forms like this that we need to sign as a board.
Okay.
So, again, get in touch with Luke.
We wouldn't be signing tonight because it's with approval.
We, we can't, well, we can't, we can't sign tonight 'cause they're not here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even so, we wouldn't.
We can sign with approval, uh, with conditions.
Conditions, yeah, but you have to spell all the conditions out.
Well, we will, that's what Luke will be doing.
Yeah, Luke's gonna do it, and he'll tell us when to sign, you guys are all set, we appreciate you guys showing up, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are excited about this.
I'm so excited.
Bringing houses. With some views, that would be nice.
Yes.
Okay, where were we, okay, we can move on to item seven on the agenda.
Sean, do you wanna take these back with you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Sean, I think.
Don't lose these.
Have an idea.
Yeah, yeah. Item seven, administrative business, I'll let you have a new board secretary.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's, it's explained to me over the years, the title of board secretary. Changed only to the point.
Mine do.
Board secretary fills in, you know, the chair, the chairs are all here. We have our own secretary down here, he takes our minutes of our meetings.